Can you hear me? I'm gonna share this right now.
Should've brought hot tea.
Get the sit down here at the back of the table.
Yeah, is that what this is? It's very ominous in here.
I don't either.
Freaking dance for talk.
Alright, everyone, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Sorry, we're running a few minutes late. Uh, seven oh six, we'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have the roll call, please? Ms. Shapiro?
Here.
Ms. Garibay?
Here.
Mr. Hawk? Ms. Jacobs Rohan?
Here.
Mr. Ferris?
Present.
Mr. Pagoda?
Here.
Ms. Schutz?
Here.
Ms. Siri?
Here.
Ms. Wilton?
Here.
Alright, thank you all for being here tonight. Uh, we'll start with our second section, consideration of an action upon approval of past meeting minutes. The motion to approve study session meeting minutes for September ninth, twenty twenty four, and regular voting meeting minutes for September sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Do I have a motion?
Her. Oh, her second.
Any discussion, questions, comments, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ayes have it. Alright, moving into item B, treasures report. Oh, maybe my board docs doesn't wanna load. Hold on. Sorry, wifi issue maybe? Um, alright, motion for approval for the treasures report as presented, general fund, September twenty four, athletic fund, September twenty four, food service fund, September twenty four, capital improvement fund of September twenty twenty four, student activities fund, September twenty twenty four, PA municipal real estate collections, September twenty twenty four, MBM delinquent real estate collection, September twenty twenty four, Keystone collections, earned income and local service tax collections, September twenty twenty four, and general fund approval bills and fund ten, September twenty twenty four. May I have a motion?
Her so moved.
Stephanie second.
Any discussion?
Um, thank you again, Mrs. Loubert, for pulling these out. I truly appreciate it every time.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Um, for the student activities, can we put on dates on these ones? That everything else has a date? Just like on the actual like page, so that we know like, in the, like later on in the future, if you wanna ever wanna go back?
Are all the files opening for everyone?
Yes.
Okay.
They're just the admin.
Alright, it must be my machine is like acting funny. Just wanna confirm, okay.
Um, if you, did you try to go in through the website or through your save button?
Through my what?
Did you try to go through, were you trying to access board docs through the website?
Yeah.
Okay, just to make sure, cuz some of the bookmarks weren't working, so I was gonna say.
Oh.
Did you go through the website?
Yeah, I was through the website. Yeah, so I'm logged in and everything, it's just some of the PDFs weren't opening for some reason. That's fine, though, I mean, it might just be being slow, yeah. Alright, any other discussion? Alright, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ayes have it. Alright, um, I don't have too many remarks. Um, we are coming up on the end of the first nine weeks, uh, so parents check those grades, missing assignments, all that fun stuff. Um, and I think everything's been going well, we've had a ton of activities with all the homecoming festivities, um, and a lot of great fall sports, as those are all wrapping up and great, um, activities. Uh, it's also really fun to be hearing about all of the field trips, uh, the upcoming music trip, you know, all of these things that we're getting to do, um, in the coming months or currently. So, um, just awesome, um, opportunities for the students and thanks to all the teachers, staff, and administrators. Um, with that, we'll move into our presentation for this evening. I'll hand it over to you, Mr. Engen.
Good evening. Pardon me for just a minute, I'm, I, I left the, um, little bit, little bit higher. I, I never usually have to move the microphone up. Um, I'm gonna run, uh, get to the point, or part two where we are. Uh, we will, uh, I have floor plans in, after tonight, I'll do the same thing as last time and redact the floor plans, so that you can publish, uh, the document. Um, so, uh, part one of our, uh, discussion, uh, for master planning, uh, was, uh, a status of existing conditions in the district, uh, regarding enrollment. Uh, the second, uh, part here is a discussion on options, um, that have been, uh, looked at, uh, for discussion. Um, there's an existing configuration of the district, uh, where you have two buildings that are K six, uh, one building that is a seven, eight, and a nine twelve. Um, so i- in this phase, the concept is to, uh, brainstorm different grade level groupings and, uh, make a consideration, uh, make considerations for what options there could be. Uh, and it, sometimes this is just a, a point of reference where you can look back and say, uh, have an agreement, oh, uh, we're doing everything the way we would like it to go. Um, or maybe we would like to, uh, make a change, uh, and what would be the, uh, challenges and advantages to making some of those changes. And, uh, so, uh, option A is to maintain the current, uh, buildings and our current grade grouping format that we have in the district. So, uh, Werner and Tenth Street are both K six buildings, um, and then, of course, the junior, senior high is seven twelve. Um, there are some challenges with this, um, we talked a little bit about this last time, in this format, when you have, uh, buildings of the same grade groupings. Oftentimes, um, every year you have a challenge as, uh, the new classes come in, um, they are of dissimilar, dissimilar sizes. In, in our particular case, the catchment area for Werner is smaller than the catchment area for Tenth Street, so you have less kids in one building than you do in the other. Um, and so it does make the swings for class size from one grade level, uh, from one year to the other, uh, sometimes a challenge. Um, and we find this annually here in the district, uh, where, um, you may have a class size of sixteen, um, because you had thirty-two kids, uh, in that school. And you don't wanna have thirty-two kids in one room, so you divide it in half and now you have two rooms of sixteen. But maybe the rest of the, the, uh, the grades for that, uh, in the other building for the same grade, there might be twenty-two in that room. Um, and this, this, uh, goes on as that grade level grouping maybe follows its way and matriculates in the district. And so every year, there's a challenge for principals and administrators to, um, reorganize, uh, their, uh, teaching assignments. Um, and to determine whether or not they're gonna have how many rooms of which grade and so forth, teachers oftentimes have to move. Uh, if you're teaching second grade this year, you might have to move to third grade next year, uh, to follow, uh, along. And, uh, and then the kids, uh, at the elementary level, um, another challenge is that, um, we have two schools separate, uh, they don't come together until seventh grade as a whole, uh, grade grouping. We don't have a big district, uh, so the class sizes are not very big, and so, um, uh, under that scenario, uh, it just is, uh, a little different. We find this a lot in very big districts where you've got multiple elementary schools and the hundreds in the, in a grade level, but when it's smaller, um, it's a little bit more of an intimate discussion. Um, and then we have some, uh, at the elementary level, we have some staff traveling back and forth, which is common with buildings, um, of multiple grade groupings. Uh, sometimes even, uh, we'll talk about, uh, one of the other options is to go to, um, to consolidate the grades. Sometimes at the K six level, you still may have some travel between the buildings from staff point of view. And there's certainly some advantages, um, the district, uh, is very proud of, uh, its, uh, neighborhood school format. Uh, we have an all-walking, uh, K six environment, um, and that's not something that many districts have at all. Uh, so there's something special about that, people may move to the district because of that format. And, uh, we have no busing at the K six level. Um, and so, uh, busing starts, uh, a- at the junior, senior high, um, and so a change in format, uh, may also require a change in busing format also. Um, and under this option, um, there is no cost. Um, uh, just, uh, evaluating one option to the other, just in big picture, master planning format, um, every, you can consider stay as, status quo, uh, and, and keep on trucking. Uh, the second option there, option B, um, was to consider, could we consolidate into one building? Could we get all K six into one building or the other? Uh, Tenth Street is the larger building, um, and, uh, so, uh, the concept was, well, let's at least see if we could try there. Um, and it does not fit, uh, we're short six to seven classrooms, um, it would also be, uh, very difficult on some of the support spaces, uh, a- as well as the fact that our site is urban, both sites are the same. And that, and our playground is, playgrounds are very small, and so we have a, a small amount of usable space outdoors. Um, so coming together does present some challenges. So there's a significant cost to that. Um, coming together, uh, also would mean that we would be busing. Uh, we'd have to, uh, uh, have a busing, uh, scenario that was staggered, so that we could, um, well, technically not staggered in this option, because they're all together. But it's a challenge, you'd be busing from one side of the district to the other, and, uh, some folks would be walking around Tenth Street still. Um, you only have three buses at the seven twelve, so it's not a, it's not a big busing challenge, but there is an expense to doing that. Um, one of our challenges, uh, once we start busing in any of these options, is to understand that currently, right now, because we don't have a busing program from K to six, um, once that would begin, we would also be having to accommodate busing outside of the district. And so that really becomes the bigger cost, at the end of the day, is sending students to, uh, outside entities. Um, I, I can't read all that, I'm going by memory, by the way, so, um, and it's not necessary to read all of it. But that is probably the most costly option at the end of the day. Um, and when I'm talking about costs, we're really, most of the time, talking about a comparison between things you'd have to do if you made, if you decided to make a change, um, such as busing. Um, and I'll explain about that a little bit later, as we get into some costing slides. Uh, option C, um, is slightly different, it's essentially doing the same thing as B, except for trying to get closer to fitting the elementary enrollment into one building. Uh, and so we asked the question, could we go to a K five school, uh, and move sixth grade up to the junior, senior high, and maybe create a middle school, high school format, um, at that building? Uh, we're still short rooms, we're still short at least two to three rooms, uh, at, here at Tenth Street, to be able to accommodate that. There's not really good places to build those rooms, we don't have extra space in the building, um, unless we were to take a program space away, like, uh, convert library, uh, into classroom, kinda thing like that. Um, there's just not a lot of flex space in, in the building, the way it's arranged. And then, uh, in this scenario, when we start moving, uh, grades up into the high school, um, there becomes another challenge. So, we have some capacity at the high school, but it's an odd situation because of the size of the enrollment is so small, grade by grade. Uh, scheduling across the building can be very difficult. Um, I might've mentioned this last time, you have a, maybe honors calculus class that maybe has a small group of kids in it, it takes a whole room, uh, schedule to do that. Um, and where, uh, in another format with a larger scenario, that would be a full room that you would be scheduling. And so we have a lot of the programs come across where you end up with that kind of a scenario. Um, so we're not able to put twenty-five kids that period, or twenty-four kids, inside that room, and get our full capacity out of that room, uh, on multiple periods of the day, and this happens in several programs. Um, and so, uh, uh, the other component i- is support space. When you bring in, uh, more elementary kids into the junior, senior high environment, uh, we're going to have, um, some challenges with some of the support space. We may be short a science classroom, to be able to make that work. Uh, we may have to modify, uh, art, um, to be able to, uh, add additional periods, family consumer science, things like that. Uh, you, you start to have some scheduling hurdles and maybe some spatial relationship, uh, challenges. The other thing is that you'd like to, in, normally when we design in this format, or plan in this format, we're trying to design, um, a school within a school. So that for the majority of the day, uh, the middle school format, um, is for its homeroom, it is on, in its own sort of wing or area. Uh, in this, I would probably try to get most of those rooms down on the lower level, we'd have to reorganize a little bit to do that. Or maybe, um, designate, uh, one of the back wings on the upper level at the junior, senior high to, to accommodate that, so that it becomes a little bit of a challenge. How to do that, um, how do, um, how to deal with the challenge of having sixth graders in the same building with twelfth graders? Um, it, it, it's an important social, uh, construct to worry about, uh, when planning, and the building just doesn't, it's a relatively straightforward, simple building, there's not a lot of nooks and crannies, or separate, separate wings and things like that, it's just not that big, so. But could we fit? I believe we could fit. Uh, the other, uh, component, uh, to creating a middle school format inside a junior, senior high, is that currently, right now, i- it's a completely different daily schedule in the middle school format than it would be nine twelve, or, or even seven twelve. Uh, so bell schedule and all those things start to become a problem, you go to a silent building, uh, where everyone's running on the clock, um, and the scheduling can be a little bit of a challenge. Option, uh, and so that is a little bit less expensive than the previous option, and simply because, uh, we're building less new classrooms in this format, to be able to try to fit the kids at the elementary level. Option D, um, is what we do see a lot of districts, uh, do, uh, and this is to consolidate the grades and create primary and intermediate elementary, or upper elementary, I like upper elementary, so it'll be easier to, uh, follow. And so, um, I, I, I think, uh, a lot of educators say, uh, um, that you're, um, you're, by the time you get to third grade, it's at that grade, you're reading to learn. Uh, and, and below that grade, you're learning to read, and so there's a, a distinct difference, we usually see, uh, K two separate from, from three six in building format. I, sometimes I see K three buildings, but not as often as we see K two, and I, I think there's a reason for that across the state. Uh, educationally, the format just works, sometimes people say, well, there's a testing, uh, component also at those grades, so. In this, in this concept, what this would do, um, is, uh, I selected, uh, Werner for the primary center, and, uh, Tenth Street for the three six. Um, partially because there's one more grade in three six than there is in K two, um, and we have a little bit more room here. Um, one thing that this has an advantage for this option is that it does balance the buildings a little bit better when it comes to their capacity. Uh, we get more kids, uh, going to Werner than are currently there right now. Um, and so that, that can be helpful in keeping that building live. Another advantage is that, uh, when you're able to focus, put all the gr- all the, uh, say, first graders together, now you've got a more of a team teaching component. You've got all the first grade teachers, uh, working together, planning together, um, there, there's definitely some educational advantages from a staff point of view. In a primary center, when we design primary centers, they look different than a three six does in upper elementary. Um, things like technology and STEM, uh, look different at K two than they do at three six, the kids are able to use manipulatives, um, a, a lot easier in the three six grades than they are in, in K two. So STEM might, you might be into electronics and things like that, um, in, in three six, but, um, it's a more crafty scenario in the STEM format, uh, in K two. And so oftentimes, those rooms, their storage, uh, things just look different. Kids spend a lot more time on the floor at K two in a primary center than they do at three six. So, uh, you're, you're, the difference ultimately would be taking a look at the buildings in the long term and saying, okay, what, how can we tailor education to make an improvement on what our current scenario is? If we had this opportunity to come together, would we do anything different? And, um, and what would we do? Um, that's not for me to say, that, that's just a long-term, um, discourse that you all would have. So in, in this format, uh, also, uh, so, uh, n- no one, there is not a grade transfer to the seven twelve building, that stays as is. Um, uh, but we would have to bus, and there would be a staggered busing scenario of some kind, um, because, uh, you have buses running around to both sides of the district, having to serve both buildings. Uh, as a parent, you might have a first grader and a third grader, they're gonna, uh, you may live in Werner and, uh, your third grader has to get on a bus. Um, and then, you know, when your first grader, they, they're walking, they, uh, but then if you live in, in the Tenth Street area, your first grader has to get on a bus, and your third grader walks. Um, so it's a little bit different lifestyle in, in both areas. Um, you, K six still get a neighborhood feel in your education, but it's not through matriculation, because, uh, if you're on, if you're on the primary side, it would sort of feel that way, that you're going from walking, if you're on the Werner side, you're, you'd go from walking to graduating to busing. But if you were on the Tenth Street side of the district, you'd st- you'd start out, uh, uh, busing, and then you would go back to walking, or go to walking, so. Um, it, that's really unique, I haven't seen that before, uh, that would be a challenge, um, for everyone to understand. Um, also, when we have buildings that are elementary buildings, um, that are, uh, in, in these formats, uh, sometimes I hear parents talking about the fact that, well, now, I have to, you know, I'm gonna drive to both schools, to pick up my kids. And, uh, because they all have activities after school, they're going to dance and things like that, and so now I have two stops to make instead of one. Um, and so that's a consideration. Um, and we get to community, uh, forum, I would expect to hear, for, for you to hear all these kinds, we could get all the elementary, uh, level folks inside this building, um, and leave us with a little bit of room, and so we really don't really do anything here at all. Um, in this scenario, uh, Werner is closed, um, and fifth and sixth grade move up to the high school, to create a, a, the different middle school format, and then a nine twelve format. Um, this one is, got many repercussions that I talked a little bit about, the sixth grade moving up, the social impacts of this, and the spatial impacts are significant. Um, I do not think we have enough room in high school to be able to pull this off, um, we definitely do not have enough specials to be able to, places for those kids to go, uh, separate from nine twelve, to be able to make that work. Uh, you have some ability to add on to that building, you could consider some of those things in there. Uh, I tried not to solve it, I think, I thought, at this point, it seems one of the least friendly options, um, uh, unless you'd like, uh, us to go a little bit further, uh, to explore that. But lots of challenges similar to putting sixth grade up, but, uh, but much more, um, and then socially even, uh, more. We also have, um, I have a little bit of a, a fear on- We also have, I have a little bit of a fear on staffing for this one also. Because we still have to staff the K-four building. But now you are breaking up the elementary staffing and you're putting them into the seven, eight, nine, twelve. And so you may have more staff traveling between buildings. You may be short staff at the end of the day because you want to minimize some of that traveling. And so you may have to hire part-timers. This option is very complicated. And, and again, a lot of these are made more complicated by the fact that, that the grade, individual grade group is so small. Having only about seventy-five kids in a class doesn't give you much flexibility. There's not any economy of scale for things. Option F is a little bit less costly in this scenario. It involves moving sixth grade up to create the middle school, high school format. But it leaves both buildings essentially as they are. It just redistributes so that we have a fifth, a K-five and a K-five in, in both buildings, taking a grade out. We get a little bit of extra space. We don't really need that. We have extra space in both buildings right now. But, but it is possible. And then we have all the same discussion on, on challenges and advantages as we do in C. Any questions at this point?
What, if, if we didn't use Werner, we closed Werner, what, would, would we sell that building? What, like, you'd just close the building?
Yes, you have choices there too. I see some districts sell the buildings. Some districts mothball the buildings. Some districts make them district offices, community centers, all sorts of things. I've seen a lot of, a lot of things. I think one of the hardest things is to control a buil-, or to close a building and then try to hold on to it for non-district purposes. Usually it's costly. The problem with, you, you want to get, retain savings somehow by closing a building. No more caring for the building, no more repairing the roof, no more cleaning the floors, no more heating the building. Things like that that are costing you annual budgetary expenses, you would try to find savings there. The one-time sale of a building never, doesn't seem to result in as much money as people think. You might get a few hundred thousand dollars, but it's a one-time payment. Your real savings is the annual budgetary expenses that you're not having to care for it and care for the grounds and, and all those things that you have been doing, being good stewards.
Could you clarify too, that like the sale of, of a district property would not be, the process is not the same as like if you sell your home?
It is not the same. Actually, closing a building is not the same. There is a series of meetings, Falco could probably talk about this. If you have to give plenty of time to residents to explain what you're going to do, you have to have a, a series of voting actions to explain what's about to be done to, and then tell Department of Education that you're planning on closing that building. It can't be just like you show up in August and decide, okay, we're not gonna open that building this year. So there's a process that you have to go through legally. It's not arduous, in, in my opinion, I've been involved in it many times. But it is different than selling a home. Or you have that component of closing the building and then you have the component of selling. It's still a public process. Selling is a public process. It isn't like selling a home where you can, you can choose not to sell if you're unhappy with the pricing that you're getting. But it is an open process. So one of the challenges that we see districts holding on to buildings because they don't want to see a charter school coming into their community. And so that could harm the enrollment and that monies can end up getting shifted from, from the district to the charter school. Your building's not in bad shape. And I think it would be viable for something like a charter school to be interested or a private school to be interested in doing that. So lots of considerations for something like that.
And I think I, I think I heard you, but I don't think I understood. So there's not an estimated cost savings that can be given based on these scenarios? I see that some, that some of these will cost money and more money based on the scenario, but what it means for us savings-wise?
We do have some of that here. So what we did, and I'll advance further and walk through that. We did option D as an example of how this would work. If there are additional options that you wanted to have costing done, and this is specifically for grade grouping reorganization. There's a separate set of slides for program improvements that don't really have to have anything to do with changing grade groupings and modifying buildings in that way. So it's a two-component scenario. So let me just run through this real quick and I'll answer your question. So there is a, just really quickly looking at each one of the options together. There is bussing scenarios. First option, there is no bus, there is no bussing in the morning for option A, or I mean for K, for elementary grades, K-six. So we have one, one bus run for seven-twelve. When we get into the other options, B, C, D, E, those are, those are all multiple bus runs. So those are all, all costs that would have to be added into, into the formula. F is not much different than where you are today, just moves one grade up to the high school. So there really isn't gonna be any significant cost from a bussing point of view under that scenario, a little bit. Yeah.
And any bussing option where we start bussing K-through-six, additional costs come with bussing to parochial schools. So currently, if a school district doesn't bus in a, in a grade band, we're not required to bus to parochials and things like that. We do in seven-through-twelve because we offer bussing through seven-through-twelve. So any scenario where we're adding buses, there's a cost between two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars according to Ms. Lubert of just extra parochial costs to get those elementary schools to the different schools, the students to the different schools.
If we moved one grade, there would be some additional cost because there may be some students, say, sixth grade. If they, they moved up and they got added to the bussing, there would be a small amount of cost because some of those folks could end up in the parochial system also.
Correct.
We don't know exactly what that would be. It's not two-hundred thousand dollars though.
Yeah, I mean, these aren't drill, I mean, you're not gonna, we're, we're not drilling down at this point all the way down to dollars and cents that wouldn't make a lot of sense unless, you know, the option, the community and the board thinks is really viable, we can kind of break it down even further. These give you a general idea of sort of like additions to cost. So we have some harder numbers, certainly in part two.
So in examining an option up close, we chose option D because option D keeps all the buildings. It balances the buildings a little bit better from an enrollment point of view. It consolidates the grades. Educationally, it feels more comfortable and it seemed to be a good place to start. And I'm gonna turn this over to you a little bit, Dr. English. The administration worked through to look at the option a little bit closer. What are the advantages, disadvantages of, of this option? How, how could we talk about those in a little bit more detail?
Okay, so educational advantages to K-through-two, three-through-six would be, and you touched upon it, you know, the big, the big thing is it equalizes, it makes class sizes more equitable. It brings all the teachers in those grade levels together. So now you have team planning, team building. At the upper grade levels, you could even stratify even more. You can have a teacher that teaches science in grade five and then so- social studies and then English and it would be more of like sort of teaming. So there are some educational advantages there. Probably some cost savings and efficiency in terms of training and professional development as well. It brings the students together earlier. So the kids assimilate with the kids from both towns earlier. And, you know, the administration sees that as an advantage for sure. Having the two groups come together and have a similar experience as well. So every kindergartner, you know, they, they have similar experiences now in that we do plan together, we train together. It's not like the two buildings are completely on their, on their own islands, but now they're all together. So we, we see that those experiences being much more aligned. If we, if we bring the kids together. A little easier for some targeted support well, as well, because we have grade bands now. We have a K-through-two grade band, three-through-six. You can have targeted support based on those grade bands. So those are the, those are the kind of, those are the big ones. You know, you can read through, all of you can read through in, in a little more detail. Disadvantages. I think the biggest hurdle is that I think there's a lot of people that have moved to these communities because in K-through-six we walk and it's been a walking district for a really long time. And there's certainly a historical attachment and an emotional attachment and, and ease of use where, you know, a kid can just walk to school. We have a lot of our parents drive, but a lot of our students still walk to school. So that's, that's a hurdle, that's a big challenge. That's what we see as a big disadvantage. Could be a disadvantage as, as well for parents. So say that a parent, like you said, is a first grader and then a fourth grader. They want to drop their kids off, but we'd have to sort of stagger start times in such a way where they could get, get to it. Or they just have to be okay with one of the kids walking and one of the kids going to school. So it would, it would cause some challenges, I think, for parents with multi-age kids. Just in terms of logistics, dropping the kids off and getting the kids to school. Okay, it would still, there's still the challenge, which currently is now where we're sharing teachers. No matter what, I think that's gonna be a challenge. In order to be cost-effective and efficient, we're gonna need to share, share teachers. But that doesn't really change in this option. And of course, you know, parents might really want to have their kids in a K-through-six experience. And that's what they want. And so I, I, I think that's the, the biggest option. The last option is, no matter how you slice it, you know, I did some preliminary numbers where, you know, we, I just took a, you know, basic math to say, all right, this is how many third grader, through, third graders there are and you divide it out to a reasonable class size. I thought maybe there'd be a savings of like five staff or six staff. But really, the savings, there's no, there's no real savings. You might save on two teachers, but I, I don't think the administration believes like if, if we're gonna do an option where we're pulling K-through-two and three-through-six together, there's gotta be some extra, there's gotta be some programming things that we're adding for children, you know. So say that, all right, now we now have a, I don't know, I'm just making things up. These are all made-up scenarios because we're just kind of dreaming what it's gonna be like in the future. But we, you know, three-through-six, maybe we have a world language. And in K-through-two, we have a, you know, crafts and STEM sort of program. I would think you'd want to redistribute those two teachers you're saving back into the, into the primary centers so that kids are getting more. You know, you're, we're making a decision for kids to get more than they're currently getting now.
Dr. English, wouldn't making it so that they're in the same grade, in the same building and more cohesive, wouldn't that also be strengthening the program though? Like per grade at least?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. It, it, yeah, it would be.
Right, because you have everyone teaching the same curriculum. The same time you could have even a department head that's actually overseeing the teachers on a day-to-day rather than a...
Yeah, there, like I said, educational-wise, there, there's a lot of it. We see as the administrative team, a lot of advantages there. Certainly training, certainly professional development, teaching, lots of advantages. Lots of advantages there, there's no, no doubt about that. But there's, there's, there's a cost. So there's gonna be more bussing costs. And you don't save, I, you don't save as much as I originally maybe thought we'd save by bringing everybody together. So I wouldn't say, we didn't, we didn't say in the cost savings here whether or not the staffing really, it's a negligible change. And I don't think initially you should expect any sort of staff, staff savings. In all of these scenarios, other than what we're currently doing, there's going to be a cost to those scenarios, however you slice it. Some of them are really exorbitant, big costs where you have to add, you know, renovations or extra wing or, you know, some of them are really heavy costs. Other, I think the most cost-effective is option D, but there will still be costs to it. Now, we may say, the community may say, all right, well, this is a, this is an option worth looking at. The costs are worth it. And maybe you as a board say, at least these costs are worth it. The advantages outweigh the disadvantages. But I think the administration really in option D thinks the biggest obstacle is going to be changing from that K-through-six model for, for parents, just in terms of logistics and in terms of what, how they, how their kids have gone to school. That would be a, a really big change.
So on page twenty-six, which I have up now, just to put it, the way the numbers are currently right now, if you brought the elementary grades all together into one building, there would be a savings of five staff members. But if you look all the way to the right, bottom right, I used a ten percent buffer in there. It really is only a savings of about two staff members.
Yeah.
If you look at the averages of how it comes together. As, once you separate into, if you still, if you did the format where we were talking about in D where it's K-two and three-six, we, we may not get all of that, those two positions. It would be questionable. But it, it can, can be done.
Yeah, so those are some of the highlights. I'm not gonna go through every tiny little bullet point, but those are the big ones, I think.
So little to no cost savings on any of these options?
I, I don't think so, no. I thought before we started diving into the numbers, there would be all of them will, will cost. And it'd be up to really you and the community to determine, you know, is the cost, as Ryan O'Malley says, is the juice worth the squeeze? You know, is it worth a three-hundred thousand dollar per year addition for all of these things? You know, some of these things that Mr. Paris just brought up and some other of these advantages, is that worth the money? Or do you stay kind of how, in the current arrangement and then take some of the capital reserves that you've been so good and saving and then just kind of work towards modernizing our current facilities as they are now, so. But all of these, we want to put them all out there because they are all options. There's just, some of them are more costly than others.
I think there could be also some like pretty significant changes or disadvantages that might be irreversible in a format like that for the towns also. I mean, if you think about, you mentioned people moving into the towns because of the schools that they have. Like, you know, the, the cost of a house in Verona is gonna change, you know, I think because of the way that the structure of the school's gonna, you know, it likely would have some effect there, right? So in terms of who's moving into what areas or why they're moving into our district versus some other suburban school district. And that could really kind of have damaging effects, I think, on like the boroughs and the communities because of the way that our district has been designed and used over the years. And I'm a relatively new resident, relatively new meaning like ten, fifteen years. But like had I looked at our district years ago when I was moving from the city... Uh I don't know that I would have been very big fan of saying, oh, well, I'm gonna move to Verona and I'm gonna have to run to Oakmont and Verona. A total of four trips to take my kids to kindergarten and third grade. I'd be like, sorry, I'm just gonna stay in the city and pay more. Or I'm gonna go to Fox Chapel or some other district where you can just be in a K to five or, you know, whatever the building is, because I think that's. Our district and the communities that it supports are so intrinsically combined. That that could have really damaging effects and therefore, I think our district's already been kind of at a tipping point for a number of years now of like. Well, this building's really full, this building's really not full, you know, kind of like trying to figure out what the best scenarios are. And something like this, I feel like would be. Pretty detrimental to like the the positive reasons that people move to our district. Um and the lot of the advantages seem to be inter- interior advantages and the disadvantages. To me, all seem kind of external. All the disadvantages are like on the community, on the parents, on the housing, on the like bus runs, on the driving. Four trips to drop and pick up your kids every day, you know, like.
On the students, though, I, cuz I would argue that one of the biggest advantages, like I I don't know that I'm really for this either, I would also like to see the. I know that this is putting the cart before the horse, but I know that we're going to also talk about um building upgrades as well. Um and I would like to see, you know, what those numbers stack up against. Um against these cost effects over time, but I think to your point, though. Being a student in this district and not for the first seven years, right? Getting to relate to my counterparts or getting those interactions because we were. K through six in one building and K through six in another and other, aside from our Lutheran trip that was. We actually stayed overnight, they don't even do that anymore. Um you really didn't actually have any interaction with. Your counterparts in the opposite or in the same grade for seven years.
I would ar- argue against that, though, actually, my kids definitely have had, uh I mean, not a ton, but definitely interaction through um extracurriculars. Um through Tenth Street, I would say, or Werner, uh dance or acro programs that have had. Um a lot of interaction where my kids have known kids from Verona through that. Uh through twin borough soccer, through RAA sports, whether it be baseball or ch- cross country or, you know, whatever the thing is that like. I would say that, I mean, not to say you're gonna get to know everybody, you know, but I I think that it's not like they went to seventh grade and they were like, who are these people?
That's the difference, in this district, you do know everyone. And you have the ability to know everyone, so that's why I'm saying like, I get what you're saying if you're involved, but. You do have the ability to know everyone when you have a class size of sixty-seven, like the first grade does or. You know what I mean, so it's, it would be different if we went to a large or if we were in a large district. But I do understand like the budgetary implications and like, doesn't make.
Yeah.
The most feasible sense, I would like to see a more like. Logistical breakdown of, okay, what does it really look like expense wise? If we pursued this option versus not, cuz we're we're saying maybe two teachers. But if we look at the enrollment numbers, possibly five teachers, well, five and two, that's a significant difference, right? Um and so that also could be, is that covering the buses when we spend seventy-five percent of our overall budget every year? On staffing, if we eliminated two teachers, that's healthcare, that's Peasers, that's all. I mean, we spend a crap ton that the community doesn't even see on staffing. Two teachers at the highest level, hm, that's probably this times two, right?
Yeah, I just see that this format is kind of a logistical nightmare for the two towns.
Yeah, I thi- I also think there's um, there's something about the uniqueness of both of our elementary schools as K through six. I think that they both have things that are special about them, but maybe aren't the same, which. And to have that community school is part of the appeal of of Riverview. You know, that it is your community coming together, all the parents are outside the schools. Um you know, I I do think that's one of the, would be one of the hardest hurdles to get over here. Um you know, it's, if we're doing our due diligence, looking at costs and to, are there options? Because, you know, the the cost of public education is always going up. And the money that we have to spend to keep our schools open, so looking at all these options is. Um you know, I think our way of being, you know, open with the public of, you know, showing. You know, it's not as simple as, oh, if we close a building, it'll be cheaper, you know, there's so much more that goes into it and so much. Involved in the education part of it, not just saving money on buildings and things like that. Um you know, I'm, I agree like, you know, seeing the updates and the upgrades that we could possibly have is. Very appealing because I think the more we improve our schools and not just save money and. Put more kids in a, in a, in a class, you know, or or whatever is um. More important than saving money on, you know, electric bills and things like that, so. Um I think, uh you know, what this is kind of showing too is that these all have costs, you know, we're not. We're not gonna be, you know, saving hundreds, thousands of dollars by c- closing a school or combining schools or anything like that, it's not. Um logistically, it just, you know. The only one that could possibly work even is D, um it seems like. Um to make it even financially worth it to do it, and even then, there's the, like we were saying, the historical part of. It and the the attachment to our schools and our community schools, I think is. Would be a tough hurdle to overcome now. Uh part of this, doing this and in this format, and I hope a lot of people are listening at home, because this, we want. Community feedback on this, we we don't just wanna, you know, make a decision without. You know, hearing from parents and, you know, the community members and business members and all that stuff to know the thoughts on that. Um but knowing that this is a conversation, you know, that we're having so that the community knows where our school district stands. Looking at the the future logistics of the school, it it's not looking like our. Our uh enrollment numbers are gonna be jumping, making big gains over the years. Will probably stay pretty steady where we are for a while, at least, but not making big gains where we have to say, oh, we, you know. We have to combine K to two and then we have to build on addition or anything like that, we're kind of. Status quo as far as our enrollment of, you know, or anticipated the next five to ten years or whatever, so. Um you know, I I I think it's good that we're having the conversation because. And both of my kids are are have went kindergarten through high school, through Riverview and over the years. You know, there's always been talk of, you know, of combining schools or closing down a school and. But you know, if there's always chitter chatter and I think it's good that we're looking at the actual logistics of what. Those options are, do they work, what do they cost, is it worth it, so.
I think one of the um sort of advantages that you have, that makes the conversation or the discourse. Uh possible or more plausible is the fact that you're a small um district in square miles. If you were a large district in square miles. Uh switching buildings to having a K two, you know, ten miles away. Um and so on, it makes it even a greater of a challenge, but being very close. Um in perspective of many other districts that actually do have their schools uh in that format. They do have to juggle the timeframes and the traveling and things like that at a greater rate.
For what it's worth, though, it's actually not quick to get back and forth between the towns.
No, especially at the certain times.
At like seven AM or fourth, four PM.
Seven AM, getting out of this town alone.
Yeah, I mean, uh not to say that we have traffic like the city of Pittsburgh or anything, but like, it isn't as quick as you might think. To to say I'd have to like drop a kindergartner off in one place. And a third grader off in another place and then flip flop that like how many hours later.
That would logistic.
Like, that could be just very difficult if you have so many people doing that. Just adding to the traffic.
I I'm not on time a lot, because you just never know what you're gonna get into.
Yeah, I would like to personally see more detail around option F. Um personally, like, cuz I sort of feel like that's kind of where we are now, but it's only shifting one grade level. And I know that it seems like for just that one grade level, there would be some obviously significant changes of. Moving those sixth grade teachers, you know, to be part of more of a middle school format at our high school, but. If that building does have capacity and if that's the only building that we'd probably be considering. Adding on to, building on to, have space to even do so or consider it, you know, because Werner and Tenth Street aren't. You know, it's not like you're gonna just add a wing, you know, on Tenth Street. But you know, there, if there are options of adding on or renovating, it seems like the high school is the only building that seems the most plausible to do so. Then would it make sense to create sort of that middle school and high school format within that building and then you can. Utilize those specials or those rooms or, you know, add-ons and like spaces that we've, we know, we could potentially spend money on. Renovating and then you've got more kids taking advantage of it in a middle school and high school format.
But wouldn't that lessen the capacity at Tenth Street, like the capacity at Tenth Street is already four hundred. And like thirty-eight or something like that, and it's only at three hundred, so if you moved an additional grade out of it. Right, you're lowering the capacity of the, like this building and Werner, but still paying for the electricity, the heating, the gas. Water of that building, I mean water, okay, maybe you're reducing.
Yeah, I mean, you're looking, according to these numbers, you're looking at like twenty kids in Werner and then maybe like twenty or thirty maybe at Tenth Street difference.
Yeah, the Werner is really the challenge.
Yeah, it's more Werner that you're paying for a building when you've got not a lot of kids in it, yeah, but I'm just. I'm just curious because also from a like social emotional perspective. Sixth graders really different than a kindergartner. Um and having like a sixth, seventh and eighth grade sort of.
Like an actual.
You know, an actual middle school format, you know, a lot of districts have a K to five, middle school and then high school. That might, you know, some be something I think that could be beneficial.
Well, and then I I agree, some of the upgrades there that are being discussed. You know, might be needed as a part of that program anyway, so then.
Right, exactly, like if we're looking on adding another assembly room, music room, extra athletic space, whatever. Okay, well, then let's have the five hundred and fifty kids be in that building where all those, while those dollars are getting put. Because we're not adding a wing to to this building, you know.
I think the real challenge there, um not as a debate, but the Werner goes down in our current numbers to one thirty-six. Uh it's just going to make the class size differentials even more difficult than you currently have on an annual basis, yeah.
We we did do a pretty detailed advantages disadvantages, so if that's an option that. The community and the board wants to go down, we we already did the advantages disadvantages, there's. Much more disadvantages in that scenario, at least from the administrative side, just because of the numbers. And then the logistics of trying to create two schedules and share teachers and and things of that nature, but we have that. Prepared if that's, I mean, if if that's something that you wanna see, we we've done that work on our end at least.
Well, I guess my question from a like, what's next steps is like, we're not gonna flesh out seven options. You know, like if, are we gonna narrow this down to say, well, these three are really the only ones, you know, whatever, two or three are really the only ones that are plausible. You know, that are actually reasonable ones to like consider, then do we do that first?
Yeah, we're gonna, we'll talk about, I think he's got some, some thoughts on next steps here towards.
Yes.
Towards the end, right?
Yeah, uh just to finish up on D, um so this is typically just the bucket areas that we look at. Uh what would a potential schedule be for something like this? Um and uh what would potential, would there be uh one-time costs? I mentioned that earlier about moving costs and things like that. Um but there's a little narrative on busing there. Um and then there is some potential savings, we think, in staff travel by um consolidating. Um it's not very big, um and it is not. Schedule finalized, so you know, an analysis would have to be done to verify any savings. From a program point of view because of special education. Um and you get things like OT and PT now at both buildings and now you're traveling back and forth, well, you're doing that now. But how how do you, does it, does it change anything in that scenario and maybe you don't save? Uh but we're we're guessing right now between ten and fifteen thousand, so it's not very much. Um and then uh budgetary impact, of course, there is the one-time cost, but I'm always almost most interested in the things that are. Um making annual impact to you as a a district. Um and and right now, uh unless we take uh into account for sure. A- and I do, I wanna say that, you know, we uh s- have the same struggle conversation with many districts across the state. Because of the shrinking populations, especially in um edge suburban and rural areas. And uh consolidation is almost the only way people are being able to afford uh doing public education and. Um uh staff savings is basically mandatory as a part of those projects. And so you fight if you wanna consolidate and you know that you want to try to cover costs and everything like that. You work really hard and fight to make sure that you can through attrition make that savings happen. Um and uh we did a school where we combined two elementaries into one and they paid for the entire thing. Um in in a five-year period in staffing attrition. Uh now they had an older population of teachers and so it just magically, by the time everything was built, it paid the debt service. Uh so it it can be done or it has been done, that obviously is a larger groupings than what you have here or class sizes and so. Was a little bit easier uh than this format, but. Um so uh Mister Paris, I I agree that there, it could be a wash with this option. At the end of the day, if you fought for making sure that you did through attrition, make that savings happen. Um so much more, uh uh the next tier of this, you know, master planning would be to drill down. To help make a final solu- uh a final recommendation and that would be drilling down economically. Trying to shut me down, I I I get it.
I did have one question, I just wanted to make sure I knew the answer to, and does the grade consolidation? Change positively or negatively regarding Title One funds or any other? Non-local tax sources?
There could be, we'd have to run that officially through the that scenario officially through the state, I mean, there's a possibility. Because of the numbers, um.
Yeah, could that mean like free and reduced lunch for both elementary schools then, instead of just Werner?
It it could, it's gonna take a lot more, we'd have to, I don't know how school districts, you know, sort of officially figure that out. Uh I'd have to call the Pennsylvania Department of Education and see if they could like run actual real. Numbers through, even though it's something that we wouldn't do yet, but um.
It's based off of students, right, me and.
I mean, we don't, yeah, we don't get a ton of, um, yeah, the CEP is based on a certain percentage of students being below. The poverty line and so if.
From that, like it, I think.
They're at about twenty, twenty-five, twenty percent, I think, uh.
And I think Burnt, like I.
Berners, uh I I have it in my state of the district, you know, it's like sixty percent or something.
But the high school is only like thirty-seven percent or something like that.
High school is, the high school is, so when you pull them together.
If you upped it by, if by shifting that dynamic, you upped it by.
Yeah.
Ten percent for Tenth Street, theoretically, that's also saving the community money in terms of.
I mean.
Lunches, not that I'm trying to scam the government, but maybe.
Yeah, I mean, lunches would be something, in terms of title monies, it's not gonna change too much, cuz the poverty level is the poverty level. I mean, it is what it is, our kids aren't changing, our families aren't changing. The dispersment for lunches, that could be, lunches, CEP, could have an impact. My guess is that since the high school has the kids together and it's over the line.
Right.
My guess is when you put them together, they'd still be over the line, but I'd I'd have to know the official process, I don't know if you can run those numbers through without. I don't know if PDE would, we we can, we could figure that out.
I think they can help you, but I.
Yeah, that would be the only funding.
Yeah, yes, that's something, that's a consideration, Title One funding wouldn't change, CEP could change, could go to all three schools.
That's not providing like the, our budgetary. Any budgetary savings.
N- no.
I'm just making sure I'm clear.
No, I I wish.
Yeah, like it's not gonna change our staffing costs by having, okay.
No, no, not not significantly, um I I think you maybe save two teachers, but the administration would recommend. Redispersing a teacher in a scenario like that so that we are sh- so that there's balance to some of the emotional things. redispersing a teacher in a scenario like that so that we, so that there's balance to some of the emotional things. Some of those emotional components of going from a K through six to a K through two, three through six to a school, you'd have to balance, I think, with, with saying, okay, there's advantages and on top of that, your students will get even more. Here's what they're gonna get, they're gonna get this new specialist program or they're gonna get, you know, so. I would think that would be, but that's, like I said, some of the next steps, he's gonna go through some of the slides um, in terms of just modernization, which I think is important for you to hear. But the next step really wa- is, is a community meeting where we pull everybody together and we see really from the community what's palatable and what they think about, you know, various scenarios and options. That's a really, that is a key part of the process. So if the community comes like, I'll never, this isn't something we want, or, uh, you know, we have a lot of community members that come to that meeting and, and have different ideas. Maybe they bring ideas that we're, we don't even see here or we haven't even considered. So I think the community portion of this is, is a really key component and that would be a next step.
But do, are we showing all of these scenarios or are we saying like, these are the three that we're actually truly considering? Because they would be doable.
I, I would show all the scenarios. Normally, we present all the scenarios. And then we try to drill down on the ones that you're maybe looking at, uh, that seem more, most palatable. It saves a little bit of time, but I like to give everyone the same frame of reference. And, uh, and, and sometimes people circle back. It's usually a good conversation.
Okay. It, to me, this seems kinda silly because why, why would we present these options if there's no cost, like there's no cost savings or just add?
The district say, okay, these are, let's dream the dreams, here, here are all these different options.
But I don't think that it's, I mean, I see what Steph is saying that like, I don't know that it's worth
Right.
like having a meeting saying, here's five options of which only one or two, we would actually be able to pull off or is logistically possible or isn't like costing us through the roof? You know, if there's a significant advantage, just say moving one grade to a different building or something like that, that's, it's a minimal cost, but it would help us do X, Y, and Z, or it would help us use these other areas that we're gonna be adding on to, or, you know, there's other benefits, then that's one thing. You know, none of them are gonna be completely like free of cost, I don't think, because they're all pretty good just size moves of some sort.
What, what I see, um, because I think it's a goo- a good commentary. What I see in it is that you've had the communication, which is important because since I've been here almost ten years now, there's, it seems like every two years it comes back, we need to consolidate to save money. You put it to bed to some degree. If it really isn't a savings, you get that discourse, you get people coming out that are interested in saving the money because they think that can be a big savings. But then there's proof in that scenario possibly that, uh, there really isn't a savings. And after, afterwards, in the coming years, you can say, well, we studied that, we talked about it, we shared with the community. Here's our analysis, this is what it was back then, our enrollment isn't really changed much fi- since, in the last five years. So, you know, uh, then, and, and then you can move on. I think that's one of the challenges is the gray area of communication that has existed up to this point because I've witnessed standing and sitting in the audience while a board member talked about the fact that, and ran through this big long list of all the savings that there could be for you guys. But that was just slashing and burning and things like that, that wasn't based on real facts.
Right.
Um, and not an integration of educational, I mean, your real goal here is to provide a great educational system and throughput for, for the community. That's what brings value to your community, not teaching a lesson that you don't already know, but, uh, and trying to be economical while you do it. There's no way to keep costs going, make costs go down other than removing people from the employment roles. It's eighty-five percent of your cost. It's the same for every district. Um, you can't, you can save a little bit of money on copy paper and things like that, but it's not, it's a one-time thing, it's not really gonna do much for you. It's, it's the human component that, um, that we're all invested in and that's the thing that is not going to go down. It doesn't go down for us personally at home and it doesn't go down for you here in the district. And, um, starving the system will only make it more expensive later too. That's the other component that I think people don't understand until they're sitting in your seats.
Yeah, I think that'll make sense. It's not like we, it's not like we shouldn't have done this homework, you know, like it's good to do it, even if you end up coming out in the end to say like, well, we looked at these other five scenarios. We, turns out none of them are gonna really save us money, some actually might cost money, some might cost a lot of money. Are there enough advantages to really pursue any of them? If not, okay, well then, let's take our money and put it on to some improvements that we need to make, you know, building wise or whatever it might, you know, might look like.
If you came together and you said, um, educationally, this would be so much better for us, for our staff internally, we can provide a, a, a better, um, like grouping the kids together at grade level, uh, we think things could be better for those children. We think, uh, we could have, uh, maybe some more highlighted program. Um, and in the long run, the individual student benefits. We ask you, the public, to see the reality of us doing that externally. And this is what the strategy would be and this is the outcome of that. There's benefits educationally, but then there's these disadvantages, how do you feel about that? That's the simple, that's what I would ask on your behalf and let them come to the microphone and talk about it. And you record it and, uh, you're good.
Yeah, I think it's also important that the public see the due diligence that was endeavored upon and they can take, anyone can take away from anything that we do as a board however they please. But again, when it comes to budget time, we can say, well, this was gonna cost this and this was gonna cost this. And so this is why we're making the decision that we are. I mean, if you don't look at anything, you can't defend doing nothing.
I'm not saying that the whole idea wasn't.
No, no, I'm just trying to highlight.
Forward with it, it's like if we, okay, we've established that there's no cost savings, so I don't know.
Right, well, I guess it also is like, let's determine a path that is worth considering to then get into the minutia of what is the nitty gritty of, is it neutral? Is there anything, are there ancillary benefits that like really don't have a monetary value?
I think, I think Steph's point was more like, or like almost are we spending more money doing, like, like looking into this? And I will say though, we've already paid for the feasibility study, like it's incorporated in the one that we initially did for the buildings to like see what upgrades needed to be to make them more efficient. So I mean, we already have them, might as well spend on, you know what I mean? We've spent the money actually, might as well get our money's worth. But I get what you're saying if that wasn't the case, because I asked that last time.
I mean, if you say as a board, I mean, we, you all, you have, we, at the end of this presentation, you'll have, we have A through F options. If you say as a board, you know, for the community planning session, you know, let's look at, let's hone in on option A, which is what we're currently doing, D, which seems to be viable, palatable with some costs and F, for instance. We can focus our community discussions around those three and then have the other ones online for people to look at. I mean, it's something that we'll put out online and it'll be available for the next five, ten years. We'll just keep it out there so that anybody who wants to look and look and take a look at the analysis that, that we made. And we could also, right, Dan, I mean, we could take a, you know, a, a pathway like that if the, if that's.
I think it's just all in how it's positioned, right? Like it's helpful to be transparent to just say, here's the homework we did, here's the research we did. None of this really proved to be maybe something we're gonna act on, but if anybody has comments on it, great, like let's hear it. Maybe, like you said, there's something that we're not considering, you know, um, that's fair. But the, you know, but our first impression after doing all of this is that none of these are really things we wanna do. You know, we'd rather just spend dollars on certain projects or certain things that we wanna work on in the district. That moving large groups of kids or teachers or whatever around isn't really worth, you know, the, the cost and the logisticals.
But I, I think that's why we have the community meeting, so it's not just us.
Yeah.
Just saying, you know.
Right. I'm just saying.
Feasibles.
The way that we present it to not, it's not like, here's five options, what do you think? You know, we're, maybe we're closing Werner, maybe we're not, you know, like it's not that. It, it's more of like, here's five options that we have looked at. We don't really see any of these as cost savings, you know, or, or really super realistic options, but we wanna hear from you.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think that, you know, it should also be looked at, we're not just looking at the cost savings, we're looking at the benefits for
Sure.
the education of the kids and maybe there's some people out there, we don't know, that might think, you know, the grade grouping would be better. I don't know, but, you know, educationally, there are benefits to that. But, you know, we should, we should hear from the people so we know.
Yeah.
It's not just our feeling about, you know, what we want, so. So I, I mean, I, it certainly doesn't hurt to open up a communication. We, we get told all the time, be transparent, be tr- well, here we go, let's be transparent, let's have, have a discussion and hear what people say and then we're done and we go from there. But then we can, you know, have a justification for whatever decision we make, so.
You wanna go over the, uh, some of the upgrades? There's some, the last slides are just like sort of modernization upgrades that no matter what you go to, no matter what educate, whatever, not being very articulate. Any of the options, if you don't change anything or you change something, there are things, modernization things that need to occur probably in the next five to ten years. However, the board decides of things that probably, these are areas where our educational program, our current programming and our spaces don't quite match. Is that a good precursor to the next part?
Yeah, I think so. I, uh, in general, if you consider that over the last eight to ten years, you've been doing physical modifications that don't have anything to do with educational program. Some of your, uh, building space, especially at the junior, senior high school, is, uh, essentially original to the building. Um, so it's decades old and, um, may, maybe doesn't exactly match twenty-first century program support uh, of program. And, um, and, and so there's things, areas that the administration identified, uh, that would, they would like to address in the, in the near future. And so at the elementary school, um, a- at the elementary schools as they are right now, uh, we don't really have a list of things. Uh, if you, I mentioned earlier that if you chose option D, you might consider. But again, a program isn't developed for what a primary school or an, and an upper elementary would be like and if you would, what you would wanna change that has not been, uh, run through yet. So, uh, we don't really have any recommendations at the elementary school from an educational programming point of view in spatial modification. At the junior high, there's a list.
There were some things at the elementary that the elementary principals say, you know, in terms of making, I think the library space is a little more usable, maybe adding some green space or media production and some more kind of STEM, so to, to kind of retrofit those areas, I think, was pretty ubiquitous across, uh, the elementary ad- administration and staff. In terms of, you know, being able to use it more. Sorry.
That's okay. Uh, at the junior, senior high school, uh, this has been a topic for quite a while, is, uh, a gathering space, a multifunctional gathering space, a large group instruction. The building was built without an auditorium type space. Now, they're not very multifunctional, but what we would recommend to do to solve that problem is a multifunctional flat floor scenario, uh, that could be used for many different things. Uh, musical productions, um, orchestra, band. Currently right now, uh, your orchestra, your band, your choral, they actually are in ensemble mode. So at the end of the, end of the day, uh, they're trying to be in an ensemble and the band room can fit the band. The orchestra room doesn't really fit the orchestra, it's actually an old dance studio that they've, they're just using as an orchestra room. And the choral also has to find spot to go. So a space like this solves that problem by giving a, a venue, uh, for ensembles. And then, um, you have a, a number of events that you could potentially, um, manage there. Recitals, musicals, uh, uh, large assemblies of the whole school. And presentations, um, special days, uh, spaces like this sometimes are used for things like art shows and science fairs and, you mentioned picture day, holiday shops, things like that. So, uh, the physical, uh, uh, the request is somewhere, uh, there's four hundred and forty-five kids. If we could try to get, uh, that many seats, uh, that would be ideal. The flexibility of a flat floor I mentioned, uh, performance, um, setting, um, I probably should have shown a picture, there's, uh, we've built many of these kinds of places. It's a space that, uh, can act as a, uh, theater, but, uh, almost like a black box in a way. But then could also be used for some physical activity, um, or STEM activity, uh, a multiple, a multitude of things. So there's a format, we have a couple places that are identified that this could be reasonably added to the building. Uh, a couple other, uh, areas, the arts and tech wing, um, is probably, uh, one of the more antiquated program areas in the building. It's downstairs, those family consumer, science, art, uh, technology, education are all like adjacent to each other. That whole area, uh, could use, uh, upgrades. It's inefficient, the size of the spaces are, um, not, um, uh, I guess not what we would normally build today. And, uh, so we recommended just renovating that space as a component to the large group instruction. In either location where it to be built, um, you have the choice of building it as a one-story or a two-story component. So, uh, I'm just gonna flip to plan, it's easier. Uh, so this is the, the first floor or the upper floor, uh, of the school. Uh, the, to the right on the sheet is what we called option A for a new addition. So essentially, um, that, that big, uh, hatched area just to the left where it says large group instruction is a, um, is your existing gym, the upper area of your existing gym, and that's your busing entrance right there. Uh, you can add to the building to the, add from the building to the building line. You have about sixty-eight to seventy feet of space to be able to add, uh, a room. And then you could fill out the whole thing, um, and, uh, build that whole end at that level. That's main floor level and then you could have the lower level also as available space. To as much as you wanted to build of it, the whole thing or part of it. They're all choices that get made, not in a master plan, but, uh, later on, if, when you decided to go in some, in a direction like this. The B option is actually at the front of the building, just to the right of the current entrance. Uh, you could take advantage of the front of the building. Uh, there is sort of a recess in the building right there. It almost feels like it was planned for something in the future. It's a little bit more complicated to build there because we'd be touching more existing walls and things. One of the advantages to this is it's a little bit closer, uh, to the music department on the lower level, which is on the left, which I think I have a slide. So this is the lower level, if you, um, if you built the large group instruction on the main floor and put underneath it, you'd have room for an orchestra room that you could enter from the left side of the plan. And then you could have an auxiliary gym, which I was calling a wrestling room because wrestling seems to not have a good home right now. We need athletic storage. There's, it, i- i- it's quite a bit of area that you could decide to build and you can access it from the athletic corridor side also. Uh, if you build on the A option, you could do the same thing with an or- with an orchestra area. I do think that the large group instruction upstairs would cover, uh, it would hugely add to the musical program challenges and ensemble, just that space alone. So I think you'd have, you'd wanna go through the machinations of whether or not you'd need an additional space. Uh, just to give an example, I don't, I don't know, can you, Doc, Dr. English, could you point to the dance, the little dance studio just to the right of the cafeteria? Because this, yeah, that, right there, that little tiny skinny space is, uh, what's being used, uh, for other, other things outside of band when they get together for ensembles, it's, um, very small. So, uh, the other thing at this level. It's, um, very small. Um, so, uh, the other thing at this level, upstairs, I'll go back. Uh, upstairs, one of the things that has been talked about for years is reorganizing the administration, uh, reception area and the security component to that. Um, right now, they buzz you in from a distance, and then you come in, and then they have to run up from their desk to catch you. Um, it really shouldn't be like that, they should be booths in the ground right where you're coming in, uh, there should be, you know, a secure vestibule where you enter in as a visitor and go badge and do all that kinda stuff, you shouldn't just get right into the office. So, um, it's, it's working, but it's really awkward right now, um, and those poor ladies have to get up.
The parents, that's not obviously where they come in.
Well, not where they're supposed to, but-
The kids, the kids come in here now anyhow, it would just be, yeah.
Right, I know, but I'm saying that that, that is-
It's closer to the road.
Yeah, and that road is already like extremely dangerous and such a mess every morning and every afternoon. Um, so I guess I just worry that like, about adding another structure there and even decreasing the amount of space that you've got, as opposed to like, we've got an entrance and an exit on the far end that's permanently closed, that nobody uses.
Yeah.
Um, and so like, why not use that backend space
Yeah.
to build out something over there, like away from the main congestion?
Did we consider the hill as an option for where to build?
Uh, th- that is the hill.
You mean? No, I'm talking about like the side hill, so like, more towards the bridge?
Yeah.
Like-
Yeah, that's where option B is.
B is the hill in front of the office.
Correct.
But B isn't the hill, I'm talking about next to the U, like, if you're at the back of the building, that huge, the snow hill.
Yeah.
Like that you would, you would slide down, yeah, like, I, I, there's no other way to like call it, it's like, it's a snow hill that goes straight to the, yeah, the cafeteria, that hill.
Down south.
Yeah, yeah.
Avenue.
This, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, like, did we consider?
Right where the road was just built, um, and where the, um, uh, the grow pot is.
Yes.
Is, that's where you're talking about.
Yeah.
And that's what I mean by the entrance and exit that's not used at all, that's completely closed all the time.
And that we make-
Which is sort of-
Go all the way around the building anyway, it's like-
Yeah, it's like, I don't know, it just, the, the flow of, of traffic and the way that things have to roll down there just is already congested and complicated, I think, so like, we need to probably be mindful of that with any of these options, you know, of how that impacts.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be as feasible to build on the hill, it will, as it will be to build in the U. Um, partially because, uh, that, you know, the road would be gone, you, there's not enough room to put the road back after the building would get built in that area. We can look at it a little bit closer, but it's pretty complicated, and then all of those classrooms would lose all their windows too, on that side.
I guess my other concern would be with the river.
Do they need windows? Uh, well, we are, uh, of course, in a floodplain, um, and I'll talk a little bit about the kitchen later, but, uh, the foundations on that side of the building are super complicated, as we found out, um, and expensive. Yeah, this pu- the soil conditions are terrible on that side of the building, um, and so that's one of the challenges. Either way, the location is a little bit less important at this stage than about how much does something like this cost, right? Cause it's not inexpensive. Um, so. Yeah. So, a- as I mentioned, I used the most amount of square footage as I could fit. Um, so it's about ninety-five hundred square feet per floor, and so that's eighteen thousand and change, if you did the entire area, which I, I just assume the worst-case scenario when putting the cost down. Um, so you can see what that cost is, um, and that is, uh, the only addition, additions that were recommended by the administration, everything else was renovations, we put a cost to each one of those, uh, based on their, uh, area and amount of work. Um, the tech ed, family consumer science area, uh, if you renovated the locker rooms, and if we re-looked at the administration area up front. So, range of costs, ballparks for making decisions, or talking about things in the future in a more detailed-
Can I ask a question about, um, the two options, and it just might be like the, the way I'm looking at this? Are A and B the same square footage?
Yes.
Just the way that they're configured?
Yes.
Cause I noticed A gives you these four options on the lower floor, and B just gives you the three.
Uh, yeah, they would be the same.
Okay.
Uh, i- i- at least for the costing purpose, what I was trying to do is talk about the locations
Sure.
and not try to-
No, I just wanna make sure that I'm seeing that correctly, thank you.
And obviously, you can make things smaller.
Thank you, it's a lot of good information, for sure.
Okay, um, you asked next steps, we talked about a community meeting, after that, we would summarize with a board presentation and final recommendations. Usually, uh, our firm makes a recommendation, uh, to the board, take it or leave it, um, a- as part of our responsibility, and then, uh, you guys, uh, make a decision, uh, to do nothing or to do something, doesn't matter.
Kitchen briefly?
Yes, uh, I-
Breathe the kitchen, breathe the kitchen, uh, briefly.
Brian, did you have any questions online? Are you still there?
I am, no, I'm good.
Okay, just wanna check.
I can, I can take this off now, right?
Yeah, I think so.
He's like, I've heard you all talking.
He's like, moving on.
Right.
Sorry, I didn't have one for you, Falco. Okay, well then, that's gonna change things, e- make it even more challenging.
How is there such a price difference? What?
Just no plumbing, just no plumbing, it's fine.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious how we got one number last year and then a different number this year, once we got estimates, and why there's such a huge discrepancy in the plumbing?
Well, that, that's the whole point of the conversation, uh, from our side of things. Um, it's, uh, the plumbing, uh, and the general construction are very complicated for this project. Uh, we try, we don't have good drawings of the original building, we tried a scan of the concrete floor system, uh, because we were told that there were cap piles, because on that side of the building, uh, apparently, the soil is extremely bad, and when they built the building, uh, they built a layered system of foundations. Um, we tried to s- scan, and we could not see anything because there was so much metal rebar in the slab, and it's layered. Um, so, we went through a big, long process to try to get in, get it engineered, um, and the reality is, we had to, uh, we shifted, the, normally what happens is, uh, the plumber comes in, and he saw cuts the floor to put his lines in, he back, he puts his pipe in, he backfills it, and then he patches the floor, then the general trades put the finished floor on. Well, in this particular case, the, uh, structural engineer advised that we couldn't do that the normal way, we had to actually, uh, power chisel out the top portion of the slab, and then go through and micro chisel around a lot of the rebar that he would not let us cut because it was integral with the cap piles. Uh, so there are big piers underneath your building, um, so if you think about it, each column is sitting on a concrete platform, and so that column comes down and sits on that platform base. To hold up all the weight that's coming down that column are, uh, caissons, big concrete piers basically going down, uh, and they basically support that, uh, and they create friction that pushes up against the weight of the column that's sitting in the middle of that cap. Well, in our kitchen, we have multiple ones of these, and they're very close to each other, and they're, it's not even a grid, it's awful. Um, and so, what, what we had to do was we had to work plumbing around each one of those cap p- piles, and to be able to do that, we employed the general contractor to do all the digging, instead of the plumber this time, because we, we figured that that would be a safer way to do the trade, they're used to those things. Plumber would have to put his lines in, and then the general contractor would have to backfill with concrete and everything, and put it back to finish, complete. Um, so, we know that that's an increase in cost in the job, just for that foundation system and solving the problem. No matter what we do in the kitchen, and however we change the scope of the work in the future, some version of that is gonna have to be done. Most of the equipment has code-required floor sinks and things like that, uh, that have to be installed. Um, and you have to find a way to work through this, you have plumbing lines that have low spots in them, and, um, plumbing lines currently that are not going to the grease trap, um, that it causes problem every year with having to clean out lines. Um, there's a lot of challenges, uh, with this whole scenario. It took them all summer to get it finalized as to exactly what they believe is where.
But we knew those things prior, didn't we?
Not, a, a year ago, when I put the budget together, we did not know all that.
Okay.
Um, and, and-
So you're saying that's due, that-
We guessed it was-
Why the cost is so much higher now?
Uh, that's part of it.
Part of it.
That's only part of it, and, and we're, we're, it's gonna take us another four or five days working with the contractors to find out some more information. Um, uh, we estimated, our structural engineer estimated an additional two hundred thousand dollars to the job to handle the fa- this foundation scenario. Um, but bidders, we learned in the last couple weeks, were stressing about how, about their numbers and doing the work plumbing, um, how they were getting their pipe in and coordinated with the general construction, cause it was, it was a, a much more interesting situation than is typical. Um, so that complication, uh, we can kinda put that on a bucket and set that aside.
The kitchen renovation is like required, right? We, we need to do this, do we or not? The recommendation based on the bids, and we had some, uh, we, we didn't go into great detail with, with you yet, Dan, but, um, some of the bids came in so, so much higher that, you know, I think it's gonna require us to kinda rethink some of the components of that kitchen project, and so, um-
Well, that's what I'm trying to explain.
Yeah, we asked, yeah, yeah, go for it, sorry.
Uh, once, once we get a little bit more information from everybody about line item costs, cause it's really important to have all that before you sit down and try to decide, uh, can this project be done anywhere close to the budget or not? I d- I can't answer that question tonight, because there's too much information yet to know. But, these are, just these six numbers add up to, uh, one point three plus million dollars, just these numbers. And so that gives us caution, uh, right away, uh, food service equipment, refrigerator, freezer, eight hundred, over eight hundred thousand dollars. That's, that's easily three hundred thousand dollars more than what we thought it was gonna be a year ago. So, we're drilling down to every piece of equipment, I'm sure, at the end of the day, some of those things can, we can find less expensive equipment, things like that. I'm not a food service equipment expert, those, uh, that's a very detailed thing, um, but we'll get more information for you. There's no emergency.
I was gonna say, that's, my question was really, do we have to? And that, that's it, like, I, I'm not, I, I'm more focused on, do we need to even do this now, or, like, what is the absolute need in that kitchen right this second, that like, we can't live without, and then moving forward, okay, that might be down the line, but i- is there anything that we need to do?
Half of the equipment in the current cafeteria does not work, it's dead.
But, so it can be replaced?
So, I think equipment is, is, is a, is a high new.
Okay.
Convection ovens.
Those are mobile things.
The, the refrigerator, the, the cooler, the freezer, um, you're spending a lot of money on repairs. That's a big ticket item.
Yes.
Um-
But not the overall layout, the plumbing, the restructuring of it all, I mean, I get that it would maybe make it more efficient and stuff?
I think, and we had a brief discussion about this at my men, we had a brief discussion because of the cost, maybe, for lack of better terminology, zhuzh-ing it up, putting some more, some, some new flooring in, not necessarily digging down in, um, painting, um, doing a new color scheme, maybe ta- replacing a majority of the equipment, cause there's only a couple pieces in there that, that are fairly new that do not need replaced. Like a convection oven's fifteen thousand dollars, you know, the double. Um, I just think that, I think there needs to be a space for the pizza area, I think maybe if a wall, if a half a wall could be taken out to open up that space for a pizza oven, to get that serving line better moved, like, it, it's just not, um, it's, there are time constraints with their lunches right now.
No, I get it, and I, I, I don't wanna disagree, but I'm worried, right, not only as a board member, but then also as a community member that lives here, that we're already raising taxes without doing these things, and then to do it for things that we don't need, such as a pizza line, like, that is going to like, how do, how do we, as a board, actually, you know, make that, how do we communicate that to the communi- community in a way that they realize, okay, that should be funded, versus, okay, you, you need a new oven, you nee- you know what I mean, you need a new refrigerator, things like that, okay, we get.
I can answer a little bit.
Paint and flooring.
The million and a half dollars that we have allocated in the capital, uh, funds for this project is, uh, all the other projects have been under budget, though, so that's leftover, so it's not an increase in taxes to buy the oven or whatever. I, I just want the project to be less than one point five million dollars, we gotta get there, and it, it's not, I think at the end of the day, what I'm gonna come back to you and say, you're not gonna get a new serving line, because to put a new serving line in means floor sinks and things like that, that you're required by code, once you start moving things around, we have problems. Um, can we get a, a new dishwasher in the same spot? Yes. Um, you know, some of those things I think can occur, so, uh, w- I just need to drill down on all, every single individual item and-
So-
And get an answer for you that's more clear.
The recommendation is, the administrative recommendation is to allow him to do some more work, drill down, work with the bidders that have already bid, bitted on it, and then come back so that we can rethink the project, and, and obvi- obviously, we all agree that two point five million dollars is too much, or two point seven is too much, so, he understands that, you're gonna come back after you drill down and find some more information, and we're gonna think through this, we're gonna continue to think through this in a way that's more cost-effective, basically.
It'll be kitchen improvements, not necessarily full kitchen renovation.
It's a bummer, cause the-
Yeah, so we're gonna decide kinda what-
Equipment or also-
Just like what you're saying, Mr. Paris, kinda, you know, what, what are the necessities or priorities, and way to make it, you know, you know, closer to what we originally thought, or we originally budgeted for, so, but we have a little bit of, you have some more work to do, you'll bring that back to us.
I would also wanna consider the cost of doing things in, in pieces or chunks as well, like, for example, the flooring, like, you're not gonna put all, all new equipment in, and then three years later do the flooring, you like, you, so, whatever would make the most sense, like, in the long run. So, the, the current plumbing has been in there for decades, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And when we're, if we redo the plumbing, that's the hope again, right, that it would last for decades?
Mm-hmm.
So, I just, I'm trying to think of the long, you know, if we, if, if we take this big bite now, then can we forget about the kitchen for a long time, or are we gonna revisit in five year, you know, if we just do the equipment now, then in five years, are we gonna say, well, we really need flooring? So, that's just kinda where I'm thinking now.
I do think that, in the long run, it's going to have to be done. Like, you're, 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 it doesn't meet code at the end of the day, once you start modifying things, um, that require Department of Health approval. And so, you're going to get into the scenario where you have to break the floor, you have to run the lines, you have to put the floor sinks in, it just is gonna have to happen. Um, it's just really unfortunate, the location of the kitchen and the, the way they did the foundations is quite extensive, so, um, the worst part is that if it's five years from now, or ten years from now, it's more, even more money.
Can we see?
Um, and so that's, that's a frustrating thing also. But I do think that i- at the end- But I do think that i- at the end of the day, what I'd like to be able to come back and say, uh, we can get five hundred thousand out of this and you can get pretty much what you were looking for without, except for these things. And the, the, the guts of the thing can stay the way it is and you can get closer to your number. Or we can get below the number, doing it this way. So there's really two options for you and tha- that's what I was thinking.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I.
It's not, it's not against you.
I apologize.
We're not any of the contractors.
Well, I mean, we made it all these projects without being over budget on one of them and then a damn kitchen gets us. It's so frustrating. But I think, uh, I will take the responsibility. I never asked for a line item cost of all the equipment. Uh, we knew, once we got into the structural thing, that that was going to be a challenge, but I never asked for a line item cost of the equipment. And I should have done that. It's just such a small kitchen, I wasn't worried, to be honest. And that clearly was a mistake, because the number's ridiculously high, so.
It's quite tricky.
Yeah.
It's really, it's the general contractor number. I think all the other numbers came in, generally speaking, as expected. It's that general contractor bid numbers that were.
Well, we'll do what we can with the money that was previously budgeted and that's all we can do for now, you know? Have to have a part, part two. Even if it's not ideal, but.
Thank you for all the time tonight.
Yep, thank you. All right, um, so we're going to move into our first hearing of citizens. I think we lost a few, but. If anyone has any items, um, that are on the budget this evening that would like, uh, to come forward to speak. Please do so and state your name and address and keep your comments under three minutes and be advised that you are, uh, speaking on a live stream and, uh, meeting that is being recorded. And there will be another hearing of citizens at the end for any other school related business. All right, hearing none, moving into motions of approval under finance, Ms. Wilton or Mr. Hawk?
Sure, I got it. Five A, motion to approve the following change orders and or invite voices in conjunction with Riverview Capital Improvement Project. One, approve pay app number thirteen from Merritt Electric for their work at the various schools. Eleven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. Do I have a mo- uh, motion?
I'll make that motion.
Paris second.
I'm sorry, who was the first one?
Stephanie.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, ayes have it. All right. Five B, motion to approve the following contracts agreement, subject to final review and approval of the solicitor. One, motion to approve a three-year contract extension with UGI for natural gas, uh, on the people's gas system with a start date of September first, twenty twenty-five. Per the recommendation of the Western Pennsylvania Natural Gas Consortium Committee. The contract will have a basis, basis price of minus fifty cents per, what's that, DTH? This base, basis pricing is better than our current contract basis pricing of minus forty-four cents per DTH on the people's gas system. Two, motion to approve maintenance contract with industrial commercial elevator, five-year term, beginning December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. Three, motion to approve addendum to the U- USGA agreement for facility usage of the bandroom at the junior senior high school beginning June second, twenty twenty-five through June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Four, motion to approve agreement with the Borough of Oakmont for use of Creekside Park for Riverview Soccer. August twenty-first, twenty twenty-four to October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four in the amount of four hundred dollars. Five, motion to approve agreement with Wesley Services for Student X for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Six, motion to approve the proposal from Huck- Huckenstein, Huckstein for the district-wide HVAC mechanical preventative maintenance program for a term of five years in the amount of ninety-five thousand, three hundred and four dollars. October first, twenty twenty-four to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Pagoda.
Paris second.
Any discussion?
Number four, it, the contract appears to be signed or approved on nine eleven. But we're hearing it at our October twenty-first meeting, ten days before the expiration of the contract. Is there a reason?
Mayor was out of the country. So it was agreed upon with the Borough, but the mayor was out of the country, therefore she was unable to sign it.
Wouldn't we normally have that like for the summer, since it starts in August?
We did, we did try.
We, we asked, we asked several times, but I don't know how long she was out of the country.
So we would normally have that in advance, I would assume, of the season?
We tried in July, yeah.
Should we try earlier then? Uh, we should not, I mean, again, this precedent.
Email him January first.
We've, I mean, we've just said it so many times, I, I know that it's not our fault at this point, but also like, we, we should not be retroactively approving contracts. It really sets a bad precedent and then also, it, we're, we're doing, like the administration then is like entering into contracts without authority. So if those people try to hold us liable, it then can become a huge legal situation where the admin didn't have authority to enter into that contract. But we've reaped some of the benefits, so do we pay it? Do we retroactively agree to it? I know, I know.
Yeah, I, it was not my intention to, to put this on late. We, we are, we were kind of between a rock and a hard place.
No, 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 I know.
Starts to utilizing the park for fed services. So, um, we will do better in the future of, of annoying people in the borough.
Is it possible just to have this as an annual agreement, the way that we do with Riverside Park?
Well, now that, now that we have, now that we have the agenda on board docs, Rainy and I have, I've been, more Rainy than me has been going in and making sure that we have these. But I, I will put this in my calendar to verify in the spring that we get it moving.
But I mean, just like as a automatically renewing, you know, situation. I mean, essentially, because we use this, we use the field for soccer every year. It's not like it's a new thing.
Or doing like a three or five year contract.
Sometimes at the mercy of the Borough on that one, on getting what we want back from them. Same thing happened the year before, it wasn't approved until August, I believe, literally the week that they were starting to use it.
Yeah.
But this, I guess the contract though says nine eleven is what I'm getting tripped up on. Approval date says nine eleven.
So the Borough approved it.
That's when the Borough approved it, I guess, is what you're saying.
I don't remember, I'm looking, trying to pull it up now.
Yeah, uh, so I'm like, is her signature not the appro- like the approval?
Yeah, like Borough may have, the Borough council may have.
Yeah.
Approved it, but she didn't sign it, is my guess.
Well, she signed it on nine eleven, but it was passed our study session in our voting meeting.
Right.
Therefore, it doesn't go on ours until October.
Right, got it.
So.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, my, my question is, and it's not for you all, it's more for the Borough, just to say like the same way that we know we're going to be using the park every year. Can we just do a blanket thing?
Yeah, it's concerned about it, because they know we're using the park every year.
Yeah.
It's a community thing.
I'm concerned.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, just to say, we, we're going to just have this auto renew for these months, every year at this amount. And like every three years, we'll look at it again, or whatever.